Call this meeting to order for the Tuesday, the 26th day of August at four o'clock. Councilor Vasquez, leave us some prayer?
Yes, please.
You can please stand if you're able.
Please join me in a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, as the new day begins, we thank you for life and the chance to begin anew. We ask that you fill our hearts with hope, strength, and trust in your plan. Help us let go of yesterday's worries and face today with renewed faith. Guide our steps and grant us the wisdom to make the right decisions for the city of Odessa and all its citizens. Lord, let us spread love and kindness shining a light for others. Heavenly Father, we give this day to you. Lead us on your path and let every moment move us closer to our purpose. And finally, Father, we ask that you, we petition you for prayer, for protection for all our first responders. Our Odessa Fire Rescue, our police department, I act to county sheriff's offices, I act to county ISD, police officers, and our state troopers. We ask that you watch over them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, let's move to agenda item number three, discuss a performance agreement by and between the Odessa Development Corporation and Grupo Tapatios Eek. David.
Good afternoon, Council. I've got to move this down or you can hear me. You have for you a performance agreement for facade and infrastructure grants, and that should be at 523 Grant. It's at the, it'll be the southwest corner of Grant and Fifth Street, Sixth Street, excuse me. This is going to be a restaurant. The owners, Grupo Tapatios is out of Lubbock. They are going to spend on infrastructure about $780,000, $360,000 of that is our eligible expenses applicable to a potential grant, and $45,000, excuse me, $71,000 on facade, and $45,000 of those are eligible. They've been approved by the Odessa Development Corporation for a $25,000 grant for facade and $180,000 for infrastructure.
Thank you, David. Anybody have any questions?
I do. David, you said these people are out of Lubbock?
Mm-hmm.
Now, is that building currently in operation for anything?
No, it's being, in fact, I stopped by there again today. It's basically been gutted, and you can see the exterior's got, is basically boarded up in anticipation of changing the facade. So it's, it's an empty building right now.
So, but these people, the Grupo Tapatios, is actually out of Lubbock, and they own the building?
Yes.
They purchased it?
Yes, they're the owner.
Okay. All right, thank you.
David, I was going to say that Silver Oak next door is going to appreciate that. Plus, they look so good, you know, and it's on the corner. So what a great improvement. Just offhand, do you know if they own the Cantina Restaurant?
I don't.
Down at 1700, the appraisal district comes up with their name.
Yeah. Not that I'm aware of.
Keith?
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions, really just need some guidance from the council. The way it works, we prepare the contracts with the ODC, and we prepare their agenda. We submit the contracts to Jeff Moore. He reviews them and gives us a comment, looks good, or he might make a change or two. But in reviewing these contracts, I just want to make sure the council understands, in 2019, the Texas Supreme Court ruled unanimously that economic development corporations had no immunity. And so when a, Rosenberg Development Corporation case, so when the city approves these contracts by going through the ODC or any other development corporation, we have no immunity. And these contracts, the one with this group, we have no, we are not inserting our protections. And I just want to make sure, is that a policy that y'all have established? Hasn't, have we discussed it? Because we're giving these companies money. I mean, we're granting them money. Now, there's a benefit to the city, I'm not downplaying that, but like, we're not putting in a release, we're not putting in a covenant not to sue. Our venue language is a little loose. We're not putting an indemnity clause. We're not requiring insurance. You know, we're not an additional insured or anything. And there's no notice of breach for statutory prerequisites that they have to provide a municipality. Like I said, there's no release, termination at will. They just don't, they're not in the contract. And I just want to make sure that as, as these now are going to start rolling out of the office where I'm the interim, I just want to make sure everybody's on board because this is, these contracts are not the system I came from. We had, we were protected, and because we were providing funds. And now, there's going to be one, or there's going to be one come down the pike that the city of Odessa really, really wants. And, you know, then the negotiations take place, and it's a give and take. I just, but I hope I'm making myself clear, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I know since November of '24, I don't think that issue has come up. I don't know if it ever came up before.
No.
It seems to me that now that it has come up, and now that this council has heard these facts, David, are you aware of how old this contract is? Maybe it's an old contract, I don't know. Maybe it's time to revise it with some protective language.
My recollection is that when we started engaging Jeff Moore, he basically created templates for us. I'm a little vague on the facade and infrastructure grants because they're not like our traditional, but he totally revamped our traditional business incentives grant, grant documents, contracts. So I'm, I'm not positive about that, but I know he's looked at these before.
I would prefer to have all the texting allowable under the law, and personally, I would like us to insist these current contracts contain protective language for the city. So I would ask that, unless anyone has a strong objection, that you revise this contract, Keith, consistent with best practices.
Okay.
What allows the most protection for the city? And again, we'll allow Jeff to review it and approve it, but I do think, starting here and moving forward, let's have best practices.
Okay.
Yeah, can I make one more comment?
Oh, absolutely.
Real quick, I think the council should understand, because I know there's been a little bit of confusion. At one time, it, it seemed like Jeff Moore was the ODC's attorney. That was really never true. He's always been working at the direction of the city attorney's office. Now, he's got the expert, a lot of expertise in economic development, and that's what we were trying to benefit from. So any collaboration with the city attorney's office in that regard, I think we'd welcome that for sure.
Absolutely.
At the ODC Board, excuse me.
Well, we, we sure appreciate that clarification, because I know when the council's in the process of hiring a permanent city attorney, and that, that individual needs to be made aware of that.
Absolutely. Chris?
So, is this universal language that we could use on every contract?
Yes.
Or is this?
Yes.
Okay. So we'd only have to approve one, one deal, right?
Right. And, and what we're basically doing, council member, is we're just tracking what the Supreme Court has told us, basically. That's what we're doing. And, and it was in 2019, the contracts, they were loose, because we thought, everybody thought, and I was on the bench, we thought that they were immune. They had, you know, they were economic development, they have immunity. Well, that didn't, that didn't go over very well with the Supreme Court, their unanimous opinion, they said no. No immunity. Okay, I got my direction, thank you.
It's time to update all of our contracts. If y'all can agree to that. Fantastic, thanks for throwing that in, Keith. All right, David, anything else?
No, again, this is the, you know, the ODC has been supporting the downtown revitalization for some period of time now, in fact, even extending the, the area that's, that's covered. And, and we certainly want to continue to support downtown revitalization, because I think that project is, I mean, that, that concept has worked for us.
Fantastic, thank you. I think this will be on the next agenda. Go ahead, counseling, Chris.
Are we going to push this to the next council, or in, in hope that we get something done?
So it's workshops, we can't vote on it, we have to, we'd be on the next council meeting.
So you think we'd have the language in this?
That's what I heard, yes, sir. We're gonna, we're gonna put it in. And, and Mr. Moore, I understand his position a little bit better now, we have different roles. He protects him, the, as I thought, he protected the ODC. I protect the, I try to give y'all advice to protect the city. So we have different roles, so, yes, sir, we're, we'll put it in.
Okay.
So should we just go forward with ODC coming to Mr. Stretcher first?
That is, well, I think you brought up a good point, David, it's a little confusing to us. I actually did think Jeff Moore was the ODC attorney.
Yeah.
And now, I guess the question is...
Yeah, what we, what we talked about at the ODC Board, in order to make sure that all parties who were interested were in the know, if you will, that we wanted to make sure we communicated through the city attorney's office, that there were any, if there was any requests, any, any review of documents, that that came through that office. You know, if, if the council had a question, and they can, they can certainly ask the city attorney, if the ODC Board has a question, they ask the city attorney. You know, and there, there are probably, from time to time, we may have some direct communication with Jeff on a, you know, very minor issue or something like that, a technical clarification definition or something like that. But in 99.9% of the time, we prefer to go through the city attorney's office.
Gotcha.
And, and it's, and it, then what that does is solidify that relationship that Jeff Moore works for and at the direction of the city attorney.
Sounds like a, because you make sure it's in the chain of command, and I think it's clear, and make sure Keith and whoever the city attorney is, is clear on that role. So I think that, that was very helpful, David. Keith?
That was very helpful.
Yeah, that was.
Okay.
That was always, David, that was always my, my objection to having Jeff Moore quote, quote, "ODC attorney," because ultimately, it was, you know, lands back on our shoulders, and our city attorney needs to be the one directing traffic, because we're ultimately responsible.
No, Odessa Development Corporation is subservient to the city council, and there's no reason to do it that way.
I know, there was different attitude back then.
When you mentioned the word immunity, that we're, you're saying that just by the fact that we participate financially with this organization, and they build whatever they're going to build, and somebody files suit against them, then they can also include the city in that lawsuit? Is that...
I'll go even further, they will include the city.
They will include the city.
That's why immunity is so critical.
Because, because, council member, the city is, the city council is responsible for the expenditure of funds. The ODC makes their first decision, and it comes to the city council, and if the city council doesn't approve it, it doesn't get spent. So you're just a necessary party, no doubt, you're, you're going to be in it. And, and by go, and the city has immunity in a lot of other instances, but for some reason, we don't have it here. And, well, we don't have it because the Supreme Court says we don't have it, that's why we don't have it. And believe me, the cities have gone to the legislature and, and tried to get it back, but stone wall, not going to happen.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. All right, David, I look forward to seeing you for the next meeting for approval.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I think I'm still up.
Oh, you're still up. Number four, discuss the annual budget, general development plan, and contract agreements for ODC. David?
Okay, thank you, and this is our annual general development plan and budget, and I would prefer, if it's, if it's okay with the council, to go through the general development plan first. That's basically our roadmap to operate this coming year. On an annual basis, we typically tweak this a little bit, and, and that's, that's what we've done this year. You should have in your packet a highlighted version of the general development plan, and I'd like to run through those just real quickly. The, we, since the downtown ink, in effect, is not operating, the, certainly the downtown facade and infrastructure projects program, then we, we tried to reference that to make sure we're going to continue to do facade and infrastructure grants, and, and believe in the revitalization of downtown. So that's the reason that we, we kind of tweaked that, to take out the downtown ink One of the things that came up, and you'll see that in our marketing budget, is that our, there's a messaging to the local community, business community, if you will. We want to make sure that our local business owners and operators understand that there may be assistance provided by ODC, if, if they have an opportunity to expand their business, maybe build a new location, and expanding additional, additional location, creating new jobs and new capital investment. And so we're going to try to make a better effort to make sure local businesses understand what ODC does and how they might help. We want to, we've been looking, we, we established an investment committee just to take a closer look at how our excess funds were being invested, and we want to make sure that our investment strategy matches up with funding our projects, so that the timing, we don't get caught in a trap in that regard, and have, maybe have to, have to sell some kind of an asset. Then we want to, a couple of new items. We want to secure additional sources of industrial water. We don't want to talk about securing that, we want to try to find a way to add to the industrial water capabilities. Whenever we're talking about businesses that want to expand, businesses want to relocate here, the, the issue of water comes up all the time. And so we want to, we're going to establish a task force to see if we can find additional sources of industrial water. We think that's important to, to economic development. And then we want to advocate for tax abatements. If you think about that, we've done tax abatements through all of the taxing entities for years as, as part of our incentives package to, towards expand, expanding businesses and businesses that may want to relocate here. I'm getting a little bit of something blowing in the wind that says some of the taxing entities may or may not be 100% for doing this. And I kind of hearken back to a, a meeting many years ago, even before the Odessa Development Corporation was in existence, whereby we had the CEO of one of the taxing entities saying, "Well, we, we can't afford not to have that money." And of course, my response immediately was, "Well, you don't have it. If that business doesn't expand, if that business doesn't relocate here, you don't get those tax, those taxes, because that, it doesn't happen." So those are incentives, they phase out over time, it's a valuable tool to us in economic development, and I want to make sure that everybody really understands clearly how important that is. I think we'll end up, if, if the council sees fit to approve this, I think you'll see a resolution come out of the Odessa Development Corporation, and we, we would like to present that to all taxing entities. The next page, page three, when we're talking about target industries, one of the things that's brand new is AI and data storage. I'm not sure how all that's going to roll out. If you think about data storage companies, they're huge, potentially, capital investment, not that many employees, but, but the jobs are really good. So we want to make sure that we're targeting that, we get our fair share of that, if it's good for, if it's good for our community. Then we've updated some of the, the charts that are in here. One of the things, if you look, if you look at page seven of our general development plan, that's the Text dot infrastructure projects, which we've updated. But at the bottom of that, it says, allocate an additional $7.5 million reserve for Text dot funds. I want to clarify, many years ago, we approved $15 million to try to buy down those Text dot projects, in order, you know, maybe anywhere from $500,000 to $2 million, which would accelerate that project on Text dot's list, they'd do them faster. And, and that's worked out very well. That $15 million, we, we determined was done so well that, that a couple of years ago, we approved another $15 million going forward. And we've, we have identified $7.5 million of that to do projects, we want to identify the other seven and a half, make sure those get on the calendar, and that we get the chance to push those forward. Probably should have tabbed these. If I was good at this, I would, would have done that. I think that's really everything that we have. All the contracts will be included in the general development plan as, when the council approves the budget and the general development plan. Any questions on the general development plan?
Gentlemen, any questions?
David, I appreciate y'all's forward thinking on the Text dot monies, you know, the MPO is, I saw on the MPO board, and there is a lot in the pipeline, and we're going to be asking, there's several overpasses that they basically are ready, ready to go with, three or four of them, and, you know, if we get to kick in a million to two million bucks, we see how much faster they go.
They do.
And, so it's, it's desperately needed, especially out in the growth areas where we can't even get onto the loop. So we've prioritized those, and, and it definitely does help them, when the CEO of Odessa could kick in a couple million bucks, well, overpass is 35 million, so, I mean, two millions is not much, given 35. I mean, but it's, it's the willingness to participate.
Yep.
And they really do appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So, I kind of have a problem with taking money and giving money to where my taxes have already paid for that money to come back here. And now, we're going to buy out something to get something faster, and it was already scheduled. Why, I can't see spending $15 million of city money when the DOT's got $15 billion they're sitting on. So why, I'm sorry, guys, but why are we spending money just to get our money back? That's what I have a problem with.
That's a good question.
If the DOT doesn't want to build nothing here?
No.
Then we need to know that.
Yeah, well, it's not, it's, it's, yeah, their focus is I-35, Councilman, I, I hear you, I fight that war.
I don't like you two.
I fight that, I fight that war every meeting we have, because that money's all going down at I-35 corridor, and we do have to fight for every dollar we get, and most of that's, you know, our severance tax, you know, from the oil and gas, and, yeah, we haven't gotten our fair share back. I don't disagree with you, but if we're going to get anything, that's the way, that's the way it has, that's just the game we have to play for right now, until we can get some other way to get them to turn loose some of that money that we're producing to Austin. It's a, it's a problem, I don't disagree with you at all.
We have a state rep that's on the DOT board.
I know.
What's wrong with him pushing this? This is getting, $15 million could be used for something else in this city.
Agreed.
And I'm sorry, but I, I disagree with dumping money, paying somebody to do a job, when I'm already giving my money to do the same job he's supposed to be doing anyway.
I can't answer your question about why the circumstances are that way. I mean, it makes sense to me that if they, if Text dot doesn't have to spend as much money, that they can, that frees up some money and they can do it quicker. Okay, so I get that part, again, I, I don't, I don't know the why part of it. But I do know that over the last several years, that we have been able to acquire multi-multi-million dollar projects that we weren't getting, let's say, 10 years ago. And I, part of that is because of the effort of MoTran, Midland, it's a transportation alliance, I think that's been huge, and then I think buying down, Midland's, MDC's doing the same thing. They're, they're buying down some of these projects in order to accelerate them. Again, and I don't, I don't want to make light of this at all, because I think it's a great question that you're asking, so don't, don't misunderstand me. I think it's the game that's played at this point, and I think we're getting our money's worth when we're doing it. If, if, if that's what the game is, we ought to be in the game, and, and it's, and it's helped.
Well, I think as a city, everybody get on the phone and start calling somebody and saying, "Why are we having to pay for, to get our money back from what we've already put into something?" It's time to start screaming.
Yeah.
It's not time to do anything other than start speaking up, because right now is, all we're doing is sitting, this council up here is just sitting here listening, "Wow, I'm going to spend $15 million when I've got projects here that need water lines fixed, that this $15 million could be on, instead of me going out and spending, telling DOT, we're going to buy something down, when it should have been budgeted 10 years ago, because we've been, we've missed $6 billion on this one, $6 billion on this, and yet, we didn't spend $6 billion." So I don't understand, and I think enough's enough. We, we need every dime we can get here.
Sure.
And so I don't know where this goes, don't, but I'm, I can't, I'm not going to back spending another $15 million just to get my money back. I'm sorry.
Councilman?
It doesn't make no sense.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think everyone in this room agrees with you. I do recall sitting in the, we had the Midland Odessa Chamber Day down at Austin, and I remember hearing this comment, and I'll probably get the number not exactly right, but I think there's 18 Texas House Representatives west of I-35, and there's 300 east of it, or along it or east of it.
Yeah.
And I think there's a problem. We're getting outvoted by Houston, Dallas, Austin, San Antonio, Fort Worth, on every project. And I think it's not just us, by the way, it's all of West Texas, and it's all rural Texas, and so it's going to happen with water, too, by the way. So we got a problem, and I don't know, we can solve it, I hear what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying. I don't know how we're ever going to have the political clout to compete with I-35, I-45 corridor that's killing us right now, because they can outvote us on everything. And so it's a challenge, I think we have to, I think you're right, I think we have to do something. I just don't know what we can do other than try to educate and raise hell. I don't know what else to do to, to, to get people to understand that without the oil and gas industry mentioned by Councilman Thompson, you don't power Texas.
Nope.
And we don't have the income in Austin. It's all because of here, and yet, we're not getting any love from Austin, is the bottom line.
That's right.
And so, I'll say it to top of the world, I'll go to Austin and say it, and I don't know how to, I don't know how to fix it, other than we talk about it, and I think you're exactly right. It seems unfair to me that we have to spend $15 million to pay for projects to get done that are already on the calendar, but it might take them five or 10 or 15 years to do. So I hear you, I agree with you, I don't know what the solution is, nor, but I do think it's worthy of discussion. Somewhere, somehow, we have got to address that issue. Thank you for bringing it up, because it's true, I, again, but I, I think it's a, we can complain, and we can get it done, and I don't know what else to do right now, and so I, I hear, I appreciate what ODC's doing to try to get it done faster, because we need it. All of our infrastructure needs it, from west to east, to south to north. We don't have enough overpasses, we don't have enough road construction, we don't have enough water lines, and it's all competing money, so thank you for bringing it up. David, thank you for your work, and please thank all of ODC for all the work they do for the city of Odessa. I know it's...
That wasn't a cut on you.
No, no, I don't, I didn't take it that way at all.
Yeah, we appreciate it, David. Anything else?
Okay, nothing on the general development plan, and I'm, I'm assuming by the way that this agenda item is, that you'll vote on all, that you'll vote next meeting on all of this.
Correct, it'll be on the next agenda for the record.
And if you have any changes recommended, whatever. So if you don't mind, I'd like to go to the budget, proposed budget, and I won't go through all of these in detail. We, we tried to ratchet up our budget on sales tax and interest income, we think we've been too conservative in that regard, so we, we tried to get a little closer to what we think reality's going to be. There's really no material changes in the expenses portion, expenditures portion of that deal, other than we took out a contingencies item that we, we had no of that deal, other than we took out a contingencies item that we, we had no use for. We hadn't, we hadn't spent any of that, uh, in several years. Uh, the contractors, uh, are pretty much the same. Uh, the, the Economic Development Department has, has expanded by one, uh, staff person to, uh, address directly workforce development, which I think is gonna be a, a really good area for us to hopefully make some progress in. Uh, and if you look at marketing, there's a, a pretty significant increase in that, and that's primarily in, in two areas. One is, there's a fifty thousand dollar, uh, line item that says if we have some kind of a major event, let's just assume we get a huge, uh, a huge business that relocates here and whatnot, and we want to spend some marketing dollars in order to, uh, to support that, then, then we've got some money in there for that. And the, uh, the other item that we had in there was, uh, as I, as I told you earlier, we want to emphasize to local businesses what ODC does, and we're probably gonna spend a little bit more money there. Uh, we typically do not spend all of our marketing dollars, and we only spend those, you know, as those invoices are incurred, so there's no, no recapture necessary. Um, the, let's see, the, a lot of the, the items on here are, you know, what we have in the pipeline as far as incentives to be paid, like business incentives is primarily that. We tweaked it up a little bit in case the timing of those payments is not what we anticipate them being. Uh, the capital infrastructure grants, uh, those are all what's, there's, there's a little bit of extra money in there in case the timing's wrong on the payments there. City infrastructure grants, um, there was one item in here that I, I skipped in the general development plan. I guess I just thumbed past it. Uh, we think, uh, we, uh, we think it makes some sense, and, and we've said this now for probably the past year or so, that the ODC, uh, consider spending some money on city infrastructure, specifically roads, and specifically those roads that are commercial roads. They may be classified as thoroughfares, whatnot, but we think it makes some sense. And if you think about it maybe in reverse, if, if we, if we don't assist there, and we don't have adequate roads for commercial businesses, then our, our jobs creation and our capital investment creation is, is gonna suffer. So, we, we determined, uh, we, we got a list, and, and I can show you that on, I've got, we've got a reserves forecast, but, uh, we got a list from the city staff, and when we looked at it, uh, we came up with an idea that said, I mean, we could spend a lot of money on a lot of roads in a hurry. And, and you all know, it's a huge, it's a huge, uh, uh, financial item for you. So, we said, well, let's, let's put some kind of a limit on it, so that we don't let this get away from us. And so, we arbitrarily said, let's budget, uh, fifty percent of our sales, anticipated sales tax revenue. That was just an arbitrary, uh, arbitrary calculation that we, we came up with. So, that's where that seven and a half million dollars is. There's a county infrastructure grant that represents a potential response to the Ector County asking ODC for, uh, to build the parking garage. That's a twenty million dollar project. Um, we don't believe that we could, we could spend that legally. Uh, we've gotten an opinion from Jeff Moore that indicates probably the only portion that we could help with is the public parking portion. If you take the public parking spots, so you're carving out the county employees, you're counting out the jurors, that's about forty percent, in round numbers, and forty percent of, uh, uh, twenty million dollars is about seven and a half million dollars. So, that's where that comes from. That has not come to the ODC board definitively yet. We sent it to compliance for some input, and they've asked some questions. I think all those questions have been answered. That's probably gonna come to our next meeting. But I don't want you to get the impression that we've approved that. We haven't even discussed it at the board level. Uh, so, it's, we just plugged it in there because we knew it potentially would qualify. That's something we may want to do. And then the council, obviously, if we approved it, the council can take whatever action the council wants to.
Councilman?
We already own one parking deck. We don't need to own another one. We own the one at Marriott right now, so I don't think the city needs to own another parking deck in this town. If that's the only thing that we're investing money into is parking decks, then we're gonna be known as the city of parking decks.
Yeah, our, our, our way of looking at it is that that entire project of the, the new courthouse, the library, the post office, parking garage, is all downtown revitalization, which we support, and that's the reason that we would even consider it. So, again, we've not deliberated on it at all. I'm sure we're gonna get some input from the council in, in that regard, but we made no decision. We just budgeted it, uh, we put it in the budget because it potentially qualifies and, and, and at an amount up to this number, so that's where we're at. Um, downtown infrastructure, uh, those are what we expect to spend in potential, doing, you know, maybe another deal or two there. Uh, when you get down to this green area down there, importance of that is, if, if you didn't have that, you would see a beginning fund balance of one hundred and seven million, an ending fund balance of eighty-four million, which really says, okay, you guys got eighty-four million dollars burning a hole in your pocket. Well, that's not really right. We've got, we've got obligations of twenty-eight million. We have a reserved fund balance of twenty, twenty-five million dollars, and we did that because we, we came, we wanted to come up with a dry powder number that says, we, we don't want to miss a big deal just because we didn't reserve enough money. We, we, we spent it, you know, and now we don't have it. So, that's an arbitrary number for, uh, you know, a big deal or two. And so, the remaining fund balance, uh, that's, would be about thirty-one million dollars. So, now you, if you, if you look at that, again, you might add the twenty-five million dollars back in there and say, well, we got about fifty million dollars. So, but, you know, it's not accurate to look at it and say, we got eighty-four million dollars that y'all can spend. Well, that's, that's not, that's not accurate. So, that's the reason we did that. Uh, and I, I don't want to confuse the issue, but we did, we do have a, a reserve forecast we put together this spreadsheet, which would give us the ability to analyze our reserves as we go, as we approve items. We put it, we put them in here, and, and, and if we were paying something out over time, we would, we could plug it in there and see what our reserves is gonna look like going forward. That's, that's where this, this came from. You have two versions in there, and one version reflects, uh, the fifty percent of our sales tax on city infrastructure projects. The other one reflects and itemizes the total projects that the staff came to us with. Again, none of those projects have been approved, none of those projects, uh, have been deliberated in any way, shape or form, but it gives us a way to look forward, and, and, and I think the council ought to understand, the ODC has an appetite for approving some of those roads, infrastructure projects, because we think it makes sense from an economic development standpoint. The one clarification in here that I think that you shouldn't get the wrong opinion about, there's a five million dollar in two thousand twenty-five, and a, and a fifteen million dollar, uh, expenditure in two thousand twenty-six in that area, that basically represents the potential for the ODC to give the city a loan of twenty million dollars. And that is the relocation of utilities that's required by the interstate project out here. And the, and I think it makes a lot of sense, because we do have the funds to do that with. The money's gonna come back to us as, as Texas, uh, approves, I guess, the reimbursement, because all of those funds are gonna be reimbursable. So, what it saves the city is any cost of funds. Well, what it costs ODC is the investment income on that, but I think that makes a lot of sense. I think, I think it's a good way to utilize our funds. I've, I've kinda gone through this a little bit in a hurry. I, I, I hope, I hope I've been helpful.
I think so. Gentlemen, any questions?
David, just for, for clarification, um, and I'm not talking about the bonds, uh, but for ODC and expenditures on a road, that type of thing, could you bring us up to par where you're at right now? Does that not have to be connected to a project that you're working on?
No, if we can demonstrate that it's, that it's, has commercial traffic, if you will, and we can easily do that, talk to the staff, they can provide us with information, particularly if it goes from one commercial area to another commercial area, if, if it expands a major thoroughfare, that's gonna be economic development. Okay, the other thing that I would also tell you is, we will always make sure that we are spending these, uh, that spending these funds legally according to our four A corporation. So, we'll always do that. We're always gonna do that. Uh, but we've been, we've given, been given the, the heads up by Jeff Moore that, that we can, can do these.
I think that was a misconception a lot of people had. David, I want to thank you for, for the, the board at ODC for, uh, helping the community out in that regard with the local roads. I have been, uh, just beating my chest at, at MPO about getting, for instance, back to Councilman Canel's conversation, uh, about roads. Uh, Yukon Road is on that list you've got. I'm trying to get Texas to put that on system. They, they won't, they just won't do it. Uh, so, it's a road route that goes to nowhere, but we've got a hundred-foot rideaway all the way from Parks Bell, all the way down three, down Yukon, all the way to three eighty-five. And so, we've got all that rideaway, and that will develop if you take two-lane county road and make it a, you know, five-lane, four-lane, and a turn-lane road, so people can, it's, it's gonna be a major, it is a major thoroughfare. It's even gonna be worse. I was down a day before yesterday in middle of the afternoon, and it's, it's bumper to bumper. So, and then we've got five thousand homes scheduled to go out that direction anyway, too. And plus, there's another shopping center going at the corner of, you know, Yukon and Grandy. So, the, the, I really do appreciate y'all taking that into consideration. That is highest priority we've got. And I'm kinda like Mr. Haney. I, makes me, kinda obsessed me a little bit that we have to cough up sixty-four million dollars for our share of I-20, uh, to move the utilities, and then we'd have to turn around and pay two million here, two million there to get an overpass done. You know, it's, but anyway, it's, the system's broken in that regard, in my opinion, and here we are, left it out here to do the best we can. So, ODC's help here is very, very important. So, I, I thank your board for, at least for me, and I think maybe this council, because there's lots of growth going on, and, and the roads are, as you know, are just beat to death. We can't fix them fast enough, nor generate enough money fast enough. So, we appreciate it.
They're critical, though, the roads, infrastructure that we have is critical to businesses wanting to expand, any business wanting to relocate here.
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, any other questions? If not, Dave, we sure appreciate the update, and we look forward to seeing you next week, uh, two weeks from now.
Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We got a good board, for sure. Thanks, sir. All right, Jim, down to number five, update the upcoming waterline replacement project, Alex. Oh, is there, is there a speaker?
Yes, there is.
Oh, apologies.
Yes.
Hold on one second. Uh, Chris Crowe, will you come up forward, please? I apologize, I didn't see you.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished counsel, thank you for your time. Asked you to give me a little leeway on my three minutes, but I think I've got a lot of information that'll help. I just wanted to speak to the, the general development plan on a few issues. Like, one, I think I can help answer Mr. Haney's question. Uh, talk a little further about road development, uh, future water sources, uh, also about the parking garage, as well as some things that need to be done to cover your posterior, as Mr. Stretcher evenly said earlier. So, first thing I'd like to talk about is, uh, water sources. Uh, several years ago, the city entertained and actually had a long discussion with the city of Fort Stockton about usable water. Um, we actually paid a million and a half from ODC to drill a stainless steel and coast well, encased well, where we had multiple, multiple tests done. We approached the Pecos Groundwater District and got approval after they had tested refresh rates. This well was not for freshwater, it was for brine water, which was much, much deeper in their basin. If you'll remember, about two decades ago, the federal government built a huge water desal facility, uh, for the federal prison in Fort Stockton. And we approached Fort Stockton about expanding that facility to about a fifty million gallon a day facility at our cost, and building a pipeline from Fort Stockton to Odessa. Our deal was, is we got first right of refusal on the extra forty million gallons a day. It cost the city of Fort Stockton nothing, but if we didn't take that forty million gallons, then they were free to sell that water to anybody they want. Win-win situation, other than the, at the time, two hundred million dollar cost to the city of Odessa. But that would solve all of Odessa's water problems, not only for our kids, but our kids' kids and their kids' kids. Um, last I heard, Fort Stockton was thinking about entertaining that again. Uh, you're not dealing with any of the water issues for freshwater, uh, with the groundwater district. We've already laid a lot of the groundwork for that many years ago. I would encourage you to maybe look at that again. It would solve your industrial water problems, as well as freshwater problems moving on. Second thing, for the, um, infrastructure, I'm gonna give you something here in just a second that'll not only answer a lot of the questions for your street infrastructure, because it also works the same as water infrastructure. Uh, we looked at this last year. This is a memo from Jeff Moore dated July of twenty twenty-four. The city can use Odessa Development Corporation money for infrastructure, but there's some caveats to it. For roads, you can't just say, deem it as it's commercial-industrial thoroughfare. You actually have to do a traffic study and deem how much of that traffic is commercial-industrial versus residential. I had several discussions with James Beach and with Motran. He already has that information. Um, he can provide you with those statistics and say, for this leg of this road, this is how much is commercial-industrial versus residential. That's what percentage of that you can fund. Uh, Mr. Stretcher, I'm sure you'll feel free to verify that. You can do the exact same thing for your water and sewer infrastructure. You can take any water and sewer infrastructure that we're having, currently having problems with, take the cost of that, do a study, and figure out what percentage that is being used by commercial or industrial businesses versus residential, and that's how much Odessa Development Corporation can contribute to that project. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and hand these out to you real quick, because this, this is a memo from him that highlights not only that, but it also gives information on, one of the questions at that point in time, the county judge, Justin Fox, has reached out to me and said, hey, can you guys help fund any part of the parking garage if we decide to move on that road? The second or third page I got highlighted for you is item four, actually answering that question. No, let me say, first of all, I had a, I had a good conversation with Mr. Bhutan this morning. He is always, as you imagine, so gracious to, to talk with me and, and- Have utmost respect for Mr. Bhutan. He is, uh, has a heart for Odessa like some, none of the others. But it's very, very clear in that, that an expense for a parking garage for the county falls under four B tax guidelines and not four A. Now, if Mr. Moore has since changed that, I'd love to see that in writing, but he cites very clearly the Texas Government Code that says, it's not a four A expense, it's a four B expense. And the only way that the ODC funds can be used for that is you gotta take that to a vote from the taxpayers to allow a four B expense. So, again, I'll encourage Mr. Stretcher and you guys for, to reach out to Mr. Moore, see if that's changed. If he has something in writing that says, hey, now I think we can do that, that would leave a lot of my concerns and frustration, and a lot of my future talks coming before you guys for that, because I know it's gonna come up again. Um, to answer your question, Mr. Haney, as far as the ODC funds for those Texas projects, I wholeheartedly agree with you, but what we found unfortunately over the years, or actually fortunately over the years, is if Texas sees an investment from the local municipality, they advance those projects of years and years and years. Well, we've seen what the cost of inflation does to these projects. You know, an overpass that's a million dollars today, probably three short years from now, it's probably gonna cost us two and a half million, at least. And so, yes, while that's maybe the state footing that bill more than us, that's still our tax dollars to the state, and it's putting our projects off and the need of roads and overpasses for our citizens way out into the future. So, I think that those ODC funds being used for those road projects to help advance those is a very, very good expense for, for ODC and that amount of money. Um, any questions? The reason I'm saying is, I've been down some of these roads over the past few years, and, uh, great, great projects. and great, great projects. Mr. Bhutan's doing a fantastic job, but there is some clarification and caveats. As your attorney pointed out to you earlier, there is some liability, not only for the O D C board, but for you guys. I'm just asking you, do your due diligence. I've been down this road already. You can't just wholeheartedly go out and say, hey, the O D C, as a five-member board, says that this is needed for commercial and industrial, therefore, we can vote for it, and it's all legal. You know there's more to it than that, and the law is very, very clear on it.
Okay. Chris Crowe, we appreciate your assistance in the paper. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I'd like to make one comment, Mayor, if I may. We need to be very careful with this water thing, Fort Stockton thing that Mr. Crowe keeps pushing. We have a responsibility to the Colorado Municipal Water District, who has been working on this plan with Fort Stockton for a long time. We don't get many reports from them. But I do know that in their long-range plans, there's a lot there. And they're in negotiations and doing some stuff as well. And it's a lot bigger and deeper than just getting the pipeline from Fort Stockton to Odessa. And so, as I've been through it, we don't need to, we need to be very careful. We don't need to have people, and David, this is really just not directed at you, but I'm just giving you a heads up, because two of the people on that board you know very well, and you find out for yourself. But there's a lot grander plan in play that will do all that and not have us drill more wells out of my hands, which we have the right to do. So I encourage everybody to be very careful, so they don't mess up something they don't know that's going on. We don't want to get crossways and not talk with a unified voice, is all I'm trying to say. It's very important, because you start talking about water, it gets very, very...
Tricky.
Yeah, tricky is a good word. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. So anyway, just to give you that heads up, because I have some privilege to know what's happening. And we need to get, we try to get C R M W D here once a quarter. I don't think we've had them since you've been mayor, have we?
Yeah, they were here once.
We have, but not since the new councils.
Yeah, we met.
Have you met? Okay. That's why I couldn't remember. But we need, you know, we need quarterly, David, probably quarterly updates from them, because they're doing a terrific job. I do know that they're, they've got a lot of capacity, they're debt-free. So, and they've, you know, gone down on our rates. And so, anyway, long story, but there's a lot of history there. And I just don't want to...
It seems like that's what we discussed for them to start coming to see us a little more. Remember, we had a...
Yes, we did.
I think so.
We did. So, anyway.
My final comment is, Keith, I'm going to turn over the C R M W D contract to you for thought and review, for discussion at some future date, not now. Be funny to move on, guys. We've got a lot of agenda left, not much time. Thank you, everyone, for your thoughts and suggestions. It is well appreciated by this council. Let's go to Jim Down, number five, update upcoming waterline replacement project, Alex.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel.
Good afternoon.
So the Utilities Department would like to update you on the next waterline replacement. This waterline replacement will be at the intersection of Athan Dixie Boulevard, so a pretty busy intersection. It will be in conjunction with a public works project. We're going in and replacing the water line, and they're going to come in afterwards and reconstruct the intersection of Athan Dixie. So this waterline will consist of 426 feet of 12-inch PVC. We're replacing asbestos cement pipe. The estimated time for this project will be three weeks. The next, the start of this project will be next week, September 2nd.
Will them other guys be out for Dixie bodying?
So we are working in conjunction with Atmos right now to make sure that they will be out of our way. Yes, sir. And then the traffic control will be handled by the contractor who is doing the work. This will be run through our utility job order contract with Agardo Madrid, and this is just the cost estimate for the job. So it'll be three weeks, and then after that, Joe's team would be taking over, and they're going to come in and rehab that intersection.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, gentlemen?
Short and sweet.
Just one.
Yes, sir.
You know, if that AC pipe is intact, it's still considered safe, although that's not the pipe of choice for 2025.
Yes, sir. So as long, as long as we leave it and do not touch it, it will be completely fine.
And my question is, though, when your contractors are providing that work for OSHA or EPA, that type of thing, what extra safety precautions do they have to take in removing that pipe?
So, any water lines that we abandon, we keep in ground. So we don't, so it's still intact, unless there is some damage, and then at that point, they do have, the contractor is responsible for the removal of that. Yes, sir.
So they're not touching it?
No, sir.
Okay, so that answers the question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys. Let's move on to item six. One question. Oh, go ahead, Eddie. Now, I saw them opening water today. Does that have anything to do, what we need to do?
No, sir.
They had a...
On Athan Dixie?
Yeah, today. They was flowing a lot of water out there.
Okay.
Hydrating today.
No, sir. Unless they were doing flushing, it might have been flushing. Yeah, it might have been flushing. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Doc. We appreciate it. Let's go to Jim Down, number six.
Absolutely.
Discuss the ditch one aeration, basin dredging, and grit removal.
Perfect. Grit, removal of grits. All right. So, the Bob Darrington Water Replacement Plant is undergoing improvements with a new grit removal system, new pumps and piping. As part of this improvement, the Utilities Department would like counsel to consider in approving the dredging of ditch one. Ditch one was analyzed using a sonar detection, the amount of grit located in ditch one. The analysis resulted in detecting approximately 4,400 cubic yards of grit. This accumulation of grit is hindering treatment of our wastewater, which makes compliance with T C Q difficult. So I'm going to go ahead and go through this. What is grit? This PowerPoint for you guys, so you guys kind of get an understanding of what we're dealing with and what we're doing to remove it. Grit refers to small solid particles such as sand, gravel, and other heavy materials suspended in wastewater. These particles typically originate from stormwater runoff, domestic sewage, and various industrial processes. Unlike organic matter, grit is a non-biodegradable and does not decompose, making it particularly troublesome in wastewater treatment. It is abrasive. Its abrasive nature can cause excessive wear on equipment, leading to reduced efficiencies and shorter lifespan for treatment facilities. The importance of grit removal, so I'm not going to go through all of these to make it quick. Protection of equipment, prevention of blockages within our pipelines, channels, and tanks in the facility, improved process efficiency within the treatment facility, operational cost savings, and compliance, like I talked about with T C Q. Here's a current sonar of our ditch. Like we said, it approximately has 4,400 cubic yards of grit within that ditch, which is making it very hard for us to treat our wastewater influent effectively. Currently right now, our calculations show from our inflows that to treat our water, our wastewater effectively, we need approximately 45% more oxygen within the ditch. So taking this grit out will give us more allocated detention time within the ditch, giving us more space to be able to treat our influent. Here's the current improvements. We spent about $3 million, 2.9, I believe we got those from ARPA funds, to be able to update our grit removal system that had not been updated in quite a while. So we are almost done with that. We're finishing up the electrical. We should be online next month. With these being online, that's why we're going to come to council to ask us to be able to dredge the ditch, which will then help us be able to treat our influent. Here's the process. It's just a quick, from the current contractor that we have that we're working with. They would use a small detection device that will go in the water and pretty much pick up all of that grit. We will then take the grit, run it through their system, will remove the grit, and then put the solids that are good for our influent water to treat back into the ditch. The contractor is trying, they're a TIPS contract, they're on our TIPS contracts, and we're currently using them out there for the grit removal right now that we're putting in. The estimated cost of this project with a 10% contingency is $505,000. We have this money within our wastewater R and R budget for 2025, for this fiscal year. And then the timeline for completion for this is 63 calendar days. Any questions?
Kevin, any questions? We understand the need, so thank you, Alex.
Absolutely.
Glad you made the progress.
All right, let's go to Jim Down, number seven.
Thank you very much.
Discuss and review the amended guidelines or criteria for the Chapter 38 Economic Development Program. Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. In your package, you should have had basically the existing 380 guidelines and criteria that have been in place since 2015. And the idea is to just clean these up and make it a little more simplified. Chapter 380 of the state statutes and local government code is actually one of the shortest statutes there is, consisting of 308, 001, 002, and 003. And our policy is even longer than the statutes. That might be fine, if that's the way we want to do it, but I think by streamlining these and being, one, and first and foremost, consistent with state law, but, two, putting the council in the driver's seat, is really what we want to do with these guidelines. So I think they're a little bit onerous. For instance, right now, if someone wanted to come to us, Mr. Mitchell, and say, hey, you know what, there's an opportunity for a restaurant on the south side of 380, would really help us out. Well, right now, if it's not worth $8 million and 100 jobs, I can't do it with the 380 agreement. So that's just an example right there of just saying, hey, let's simplify this 380 agreement, put the council in the driver's seat ultimately, is what it comes down to. So you have basically a red line version in front of you, and if the council's fine with it, I can continue to go down this path and clean it up a little bit and make it a little more, well, I think, user-friendly for our folks in town. So really, that's where the genesis of this came from, not being able to do certain projects that were coming to us, so.
Unless we made a copy hard, we have no computers up here. So no, we can't see it unless we copy it. Our computers are all...
Did you have a trip? Did you trip?
Yeah, we did.
We're all tripped, we're all gone.
We're all tripping up here.
Some of them need copying, because we don't trust those computers. So I have my red line.
Okay, very good. But basically, the red lines are what I did. The black is what's obviously left from before. And obviously, before we would do anything, that would go to Mr. Stretcher for his approval, and then to come back to the council as a formal approval. So.
I think we want to move forward, guys. Are there any questions or thoughts?
Aaron, just one. The, I think updating the agreement is powerful, but just a question. The design committee was eliminated twice, mentioned twice, eliminated twice. That just wasn't functional.
I don't know that a design committee is necessary for what we do. I mean, if you look at Chapter 380, there really is no need for a design committee. If the council feels that there should be one, that's certainly the prerogative. But in my mind, again, it just goes back to simplifying the process.
Gotcha.
All right, thanks, Aaron. I think you have the thumbs up to go forward.
Very good, sir.
Mayor, if I could, I always have good news.
Yes, sir.
Here, I've got my little article here. I'm keeping my notebook. In 2023, the Texas Supreme Court ruled 7 to 0, 7 to 2, that cities have no immunity under Chapter 380 agreements. They said, they were pretty harsh in their statement. The line that I always read is, "Economic development is not an essential function of government. Local economic development programs are purely private." So you can tell what their attitude is. And so, when we redo these guidelines, I was looking at some of your old agreements. There's just, there's just no protections, very, very little. And so we're going to plug those in again, and you'll see them. And I hope that's okay with y'all. We just, again, need some direction. We didn't know if this was policy, or if it was just one of the...
Keith, I think I can speak for the council when I say, we want you to use best practice on all contracts, and make any changes that need to be made to protect the city from all liability as best one can by contract. Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. We appreciate it. Stay there, because you also have number eight, which is discussed, Operation Instruction Sports Complex, and RFQs.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. With this item, what we wanted to discuss was that last week, we had a conversation with the, with the Sports Foundation Board. If we go back in time about two years, there was a decision that the city would then basically enter into an agreement with the foundation. That foundation would then go out and get a operator for the sports complex, which is owned by the City of Odessa. So after talking with bond counsel, and with the foundation last week, it seemed to make more sense now that we not have the foundation enter into that agreement with the operator, but rather the city enter into an agreement with that operator. We think that would be much more efficient, and ultimately, in order for these bonds to remain cash tax exempt, no matter how you slice it, this thing has to be under the direction of the city. So with all of that said, it just seemed like the cleaner approach would be just to, again, the city go out for an RFQP, request for qualification and proposal for an operator. And that's what this item is just to let you know. And then at the direction of council, if there's a consensus, we can certainly push that out probably in the next few days.
I agree. Gentlemen, any discussion or questions, Aaron? I think it's a much better approach. Make it simpler is better.
Just to clarify, I want, we're not, we're still not going to be, the other question that came up is, you know, who's going to oversee the operator? And of course, the foundation originally was going to oversee the operator and judge effectiveness. We've, they've agreed, we've, nobody's got, that's a volunteer board, and nobody's got the time or expertise to do that. So it needs to fall back under the city. Correct me if I misspeak. But we'll have, probably have to hire a person to either assist John, or however we decide to do it. Aaron and I really haven't flushed that out yet, but we've got to do something a little, because, again, originally, they were going to lease the sports complex. Anyway, the foundation was going to handle all that. Well, that all changed when financing changed. And now, we were paying cash, and so that's all changed. And we got rid of all the agreements and leases and all that stuff, and now we just have to be careful with spending the money properly, so we protect the tax-exempt status for fraud.
Yes, sir. So what we'll need to do is go off of that RFQ, RFP for the operator, and then we'll need to enter into a qualified management agreement with that operator, and then separately from that, an arrangement through a letter agreement or whatever instrument Mr. Stretcher sees fit, so that we can accept funds and donations from that, from that foundation.
Right. The foundation's sole purpose now would be to accept donations, and so people can deduct that. If they don't deduct it as an advertising expense, some of those big companies, you know, will do that as opposed to a 501(c)(3). But we don't want to keep the public from, if they want to buy a brick for $1,000 with their name on it for their family or a memorial for somebody for $1,000 bucks, we want them to be able to make that donation or contribution to the complex, be able to deduct it. And so their job basically is single-focused now, I guess is a good word to put it, and that is to focus on fundraising and overseeing the money in that account.
Yes, sir. But I think both functions, what both entities do best.
Yep.
Mr. Smith, for the benefit of our viewing audience, the public, where are we with ground moving out there?
Sure. So right now, we're in a development and construction draft with Sports Med. Those are the folks that would actually be building it. You should have a contract. It's actually in legal right now, taking a look at it. We'll get that to you as quickly as possible. We could probably execute that contract somewhere around September 23rd at that meeting, and they could, they could start pretty soon after that. So they said they could mobilize probably sooner than that, but I think you're looking at probably November for mobilization and everything really moving and turning out there.
And again, for the benefit of the viewing audience or public, as I say, what would be the expected time of completion of this sports complex?
Right now, they say around two years, but I kind of like the idea of two years after they've moved all the dirt and started. So I, you know, I've heard two years, but I wonder if it's closer to two and a half. It's a very, very big project.
I think we started with 18 months, and you're going longer on it.
I don't know. I just, it's 150,000 square feet. You know, you're talking about 10 courts, was it 10?
Basketball.
I'm sorry, 10... Ba, I'm sorry, ten soccer court, soccer fields, eight baseball fields, eight, twelve baseball fields, a hundred acres and a lot of grading. So there's a slope out there on that grading that, there's a lot of dirt work, so.
There's a lot of dirt. I think you can get the fields open quicker, but the building's going to be slow.
Yes, sir.
No, the fields, the fields will be quicker, that's what told us that from the beginning, those, those are pretty simple, but.
So we're looking into the early year of 2028, is that what I hear you saying?
I, I feel personally that's probably the timeline, but then again, they're about to give us a contract here, so we'll, we'll hold them to that more than anything.
Aaron, was there any priority on making the fields first?
I think the idea is to make, is that, they had discussed fields first, but practically, you know, it's going to be a little hard to get out there with, with all the construction traffic and things of that nature, one way in, basically one way out with Fodry. Yeah, she, well, that's, that's true, one way in, one way out. So I think logistically, it'll be a challenge. I think we probably need to just step back for a little bit and let them attack this project as, as quickly and efficiently as they possibly can.
But I do need to report to the, to the council that the things are already moving pretty good. The contractor that Sports Med has hired to do the physical construction is Lee Lewis, and they have already met with Larry, Bell, and us, and so that they've, they know where they're going to stage their project, they know how they're going to get from point A to point B, so they don't tear up our new road up there, which we just, Mr. Bell just got the pavement. So there, there is, there's a lot going on up there. We've kept, we got one or two surprises that we didn't know we were going to get, you're going to hear about one of them, but it looks like that for the most part, everything else is curb and gutter is poured on the north part of Fodry, and it's paved all the way past the sports complex. But we've got a couple of other issues, but it is actually moving.
Guys, alright, let's move on. Thank you very much, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agenda number nine is discuss the water sewer rate increase for seniors customers. Kaylee?
Mine will be very fast.
Thank you.
So last year, council elected to freeze the rates for water and sewer only, not solid waste, for customers sixty-five and above, and so the rate increase last year was three percent, they elected to freeze that. Last year before the freeze, there were four thousand two hundred and twenty-five senior accounts approximately. After we put that freeze into place, current data indicates we have four thousand six hundred accounts classified as senior, so a lot of people took advantage of that freeze. We would like some direction from council on whether or not you would like us to continue that hold for sixty-five and above accounts in regard to the one and a half percent increase we are proposing, and that would be subject only to those inside city limits.
I, I person for it, but I'll, so let's say everyone have a word saved, but some people are affected more by it than others.
Some don't care.
Personal bias, personal bias.
Yeah. I'll start with Councilman Haynes, work our way across the dais.
I'm for just leaving it alone.
I am too.
Leaving the rate alone?
Leaving the rate alone, just leaving it wherever it's at right now.
Kaylee, I can, I can understand percentages better. Would you have any idea, out of a hundred percent of our building, what percentage is our senior and disabled?
Well, that's a great question, I don't have that figure, but I can.
What would you guess?
Do we have about forty-five thousand customers, and that's forty-six hundred, that's ten percent.
That's ten percent.
Roughly ten percent, okay. Excellent.
Thank you, Mayor.
For those of us on the dais that, that it affects, if we get a raise, you know, for what we do here, maybe I can.
Ask earlier next year.
That was coming.
Speaking, speaking for myself, I, either way with me.
I think the question is, if I understand right, Councilman Hayne, Councilman Canal are suggesting no increase, what's the negative effect of no one point five? Because I don't think we can do that, I don't think you have the money to do that if you don't raise it, to pay for services that are currently being rendered. What's the, I guess.
Are you talking about the fiscal impact?
Can someone speak on that?
The fiscal impact of not doing it? That's a great question, our MUNIS system has trouble putting dollar figures to these numbers, we really tried, and we're still actively trying, but it's such a small percentage of our customer base, that I don't think the fiscal impact would be near as intense and negative as may be perceived. But we're still trying to get a dollar amount to that.
Mayor, you were guessing ten percent, did you say?
Just based on the total number of volume of customers versus that number.
One point five percent of a ten percent group, I think it'd be nominal.
It can't be much.
Right.
Yeah, for, you're, I'm going to make sure I understand correctly, you're saying don't increase it one point five for anyone or just seniors?
Oh, just, just for seniors.
This is what, this is, this is what for seniors is.
Okay, I apologize, I thought you meant everyone.
Sorry, I misunderstood you.
So we have two guesses, I mean, they're, we're just kind of taking a straw, but we're just talking.
But it was also seniors and disabled customers on the, yeah.
Yep.
It would be so nominal, I think it'd be helpful for them.
I have no problem with that, gentlemen, just a thought.
I say leave the seniors alone.
I think we all agree, leave seniors alone.
Alright, thank you.
Hallelujah.
Alright, perfect.
We got a raise, Gilbert.
Alright, now let's go to number eleven.
Mayor?
Excuse me, yes, sir.
If I could, I got a, I got a email from Councilmember Stoker, and he wanted his letter to be read into the record, if that's okay with you. I was going to read it.
How long is, I mean, I guess what is the content?
The content's his thoughts on the sewer ra, the, the rate increase.
I guess the question I have is, do you support it or against it?
He's against it.
He's against the, then I guess read it to the record.
He's against the rate increase.
Oh, he's against rate, I think we all agree to that.
I think that's.
We all agree to that, so I don't think it matters, does it?
I think that's all we need to know, he's against it.
Yeah, he's against it. We are too, so, I mean, I think we're all against it, so, leave the seniors alone, is what we're saying.
Let's just leave the seniors alone.
I think that's good enough.
For the record, he voted in favor.
You want to read it, you can read it.
Well, I just, you know, courtesy for one of the seven, I.
Okay. We are opposed.
Sir?
We're not opposed.
Okay.
Is it one page?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, I regret that I cannot be with you in person for today's discussion on water and sewer rate increases. Because of the importance of this issue, I am submitting my thoughts in writing. I respectfully urge the council to freeze water and sewer rates for all City of Odessa billing accounts until the billing and collections department can demonstrate that all accounts are being billed accurately and that the city is collecting the full revenue it is due. As we saw during last month's billing issue, more than fifteen hundred accounts were not billed correctly and are now being back billed for twelve months, the maximum period allowed by law. This strongly suggests the problem may have extended beyond the timeframe without knowing how much revenue has already been lost or may still be uncollected. It does not seem fair to ask citizens to shoulder higher rates if the city were collecting its full revenue, a rate increase may not even be necessary. I am also hopeful that the council will protect seniors from rate increases, many older residents face challenges applying for the discounts they are entitled to, and I will continue to believe the process should be simplified.
Let me ask if y'all know, I'm pretty sure the fifteen hundred had been corrected, is that, is that accurate? Aaron, can you speak on that? Or whoever can speak on that?
Yes, they have.
As far as you, I mean, I heard some concerns, but as far as I understand, I'm trying to remember exactly his words, but everyone's being billed and other than the routinely people don't pay, or I don't know what happens a percentage of the time, but everyone's paying, there's not.
Correct, and those that were affected are paying their monthly for that year.
Okay, so I'm, I'm satisfied, thank you very much. I think the words to finance is that we're going to probably waive an increase for senior citizens.
Okay.
That's, that's, I want y'all, move under that assumption.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to number eleven, excuse me, ten. Review proposed reallocation of the remaining two thousand nineteen strategic obligation bonds.
Thank you so much. Okay, so the two thousand nineteen CO was issued for a number of eligible purposes, parks, roads, public safety, new OPD facility, fire station, animal shelter, et cetera. After the conclusion of all of those projects, there are a couple still outstanding for roads that we have set aside, but in, not including those, there was eleven point five million dollars left in funds available. So what we did as part of the supplemental process is assign those CO funds to different projects to alleviate the pressure that we were putting on multiple fund balances. And so the projects that we are proposing are towards OPD, three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for their secure fence parking area. The large majority of the funds we are proposing go towards the new fire station, ten point nine million. There is an irrigation system for parks, a hundred thousand, and then towards Public Works and their various road projects, we are proposing a hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
We appreciate y'all's work on that, I look forward to picking it up in council, but I think those are excellent suggestions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norma, on discussion of boards and commission appointments?
Yes, Chief Gurke serves on the emergency nine-one-one advisory board, he has, he represents the city of Odessa. The council has one appointee, and his term is, is up at the end of, first, first of September, so he is willing to be reappointed if council wishes to reappoint him to serve on this board. And council can take action at the six o'clock meeting.
So moved.
At the six o'clock.
Six o'clock meeting. Jumping ahead.
Just not.